Good evening, welcome to the special town council meeting on Wednesday, May 8th. All day I thought it was Tuesday and then I realized tonight it was Wednesday. Oh, okay. First item is a pledge of allegiance. Councilor Cockman, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're here to talk about the budget. Town Manager Bridges, you have some items to present for us.
Yeah, we've got to bring the screen down and we've actually got a master spreadsheet so everybody can look at the numbers as we adopt.
Yes.
Councilor Drake?
Here.
Councilor Hurley?
Here.
Councilor Cockman?
Here.
Councilor Manusos?
Here.
Councilor McAllister?
Here.
Councilor Montaneri?
Here.
Councilor Roberts?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Consol?
Present.
And Chairperson Hammond.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we start, can I ask if we're going to get a hard copy of this or we're going off the screens?
Going off the screens. You want a hard copy?
Yes, and I raised this issue last year because the screens are like, you know, here today, gone tomorrow, and at the same time, I'm sure the public can't memorize the screens, so.
Are they in these books?
No.
Does she want me to go copy it?
He's going to go make copies. He's going to go print them.
Do you want to look at the screen?
The numbers change.
It's all in your table, too.
Huh?
That was good. Want to do it again?
Did you change it since I emailed you?
I don't know.
No, I emailed it to you at the end of the day.
No, I didn't touch it.
All right, I can cut right out.
I need to talk to him.
I need to talk to him about the story.
Won't be the last time.
At least I don't do it like that.
I've got to switch to the screen.
You can't even read it on TV.
Even with the direct feed on the TV, you can't.
Well, so what are you going to do?
Nothing.
Can you do, can you do it if he had, we're having paper copies. Can you do a shot of a paper copy?
Where am I going to put it?
In where the, this thing is. In, in there?
I know how you do it on the screen and you can show the podium and the thing. It's too small. Even full screen, it's too small. Can't read the writing.
Unless you've got like the jumbo trunk, there's no way they're going to see it.
Yeah. I think if they can hear us, that we had it and then it can be online. Yeah. As long as it's online, they can say where they could find it. Yeah, that would be the best. Yeah.
Normally, normally like, normally a club makes a call, they challenge it with a fee or if it's been like, like one day rain, if it's water, I'm going to cancel it myself.
I can shut this off here again.
Well, that's the thing is there's no one doing it, right? So, yeah, anyone?
I'm waiting for this to go down. It takes so long.
I know, but just to...
So just a question. I'm waiting for this to go down. It takes so long.
Okay. I know, but just to...
So just a question. I'm waiting for this to go down. It takes so long.
Okay. So just a question.
I'm waiting for this to go down. It takes so long.
No, because we're still showing an expenditure in the road fund of 1.2 million dollars.
Oh, God. I have, I just have the...
Normally, normally like, normally a club makes a call, they challenge it with a fee or if it's been like, like one day rain, if it's water, I'm going to cancel it myself.
I can shut this off here again.
Well, that's the thing is there's no one doing it, right? So, yeah, anyone?
I'm waiting for this to go down. It takes so long.
I know, but just to...
So just a question. I'm waiting for this to go down. It takes so long.
Okay. So just a question.
I'm waiting for this to go down. It takes so long.
Okay. Any other questions on the revenue? No. Okay, we'll move over to expenditures. Okay, and we'll page over to the right. Freeze the pains. Okay, so we've had some changes as we talked about in the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. We've had some changes in the insurances over the past six weeks since we've published the Town Manager's budget. And we've made some tweaks in the overall spending plan recognizing those differences. Now, in terms of adds, we're proposing to add $2,000 to the Town Manager's budget for additional travel and training in the Town Manager's office. Notice that the total is still less than the current year. And we'll page down a little bit. We're adding, and again, these are dollars we're moving from the insurance line because we're taking those cuts. We're adding some money to the Police Department budget in anticipation of the school resource officer grant for the middle school. If that person is hired, we have some additional dollars to make sure we can bring them on and pay them in the, in the next year. So those dollars are moved to the Police Department line item. We're responsible for 25% of the total cost. We don't anticipate having a full year of a person, but that's enough to cover 25% of the cost for a partial year of that person. And understanding that in the following year, we would have to add more, in the following year, more than that, and at the end of the third year, we would be covering the entire cost. Okay, we'll page down a little bit. The library, Budget and Finance has recommended a deduct of $5,000, some of it insurance, some of it from their line items. Let's go down. This is the net effect of the insurance changes with the Board of Ed. We share insurances. The Board of Ed's has 69% of the insurance spend and we have 31%. And whatever changes are made, we proportionate that out accordingly. We'll go down a little bit. And there's the health insurance adjustment on the town side for a further deduct. And we'll go down a little bit. So net effect, total appropriation is, we'll page over. 89,192,852. Well, it's with roads.
No, that is without roads.
No, look at the bottom line. Total including road.
No, it's not in there.
Okay, so you're just going to move that over?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, this, this original road number was $389,000 to be raised by taxes. So we've increased that here to offset the reduction of the locket. You don't see locket and tar in this spreadsheet because it's off in the capital road fund. Okay, so in the road fund, we're anticipating 1.2 million and up, and 607 of that now is anticipated to be raised by taxes and the rest is a combination of tar and locket funds for a total budget of 89,789,264.
624.
624. 789, 89,798,624. O U eight one two. Okay, so that's where we are. Discussion of further additions, changes. Now, let's go to the motion page. Now, for adoption and on the podium this evening, it's a series of motions, I think there's seven of them, that you'll have to make individually based upon these numbers on the left. Total spending, total C N F road budget, total library budget, total school budget, the tax levy, the mill levy, so forth and so on, and you'll adopt those individually and you'll have a budget for next year. There's also a series of change motions on the podium this evening that the council has to adopt. Those are modifications to the Town Manager's budget. It's a process Weathersfield follows.
So, how do we start? Oh, one thing, can you talk about the, we talked about in Budget and Finance, the reduction on the town side, but we've added it back in for improvements to Webb?
We're going to reduce to 100,000.
Well, there was a undeclared unidentified series of improvements in the capital budget of roughly $200,000. The Budget and Finance Committee had asked if there was enough available in that line item to pave a majority of the Webb school parking lot. And we ran those numbers and there is enough to pave the very north end and then what would we consider the west end or the area behind the school. So 200,000 would be, would be enough to do that.
Right, and they weren't touching those tennis courts?
No, we're doing the tennis courts. Yeah, tennis courts and the parking lot are proposed for the capital budget, so, okay.
Councilor Manusos, do you want to talk about the Budget and Finance process of reviewing?
Sure. During, during this process, we had, had met with Budget and Finance, we've met with the Board of Ed, and we've had some very good productive meetings. The communication, I think, has been very good, better and better, you know, every year, I think the budgets have been getting better. And we've gone, we went through a, a process like we did last year of trying to start from, trying to reconcile what the, the Board of Ed had presented to where we on Budget and Finance had thought the adds and deducts would come to a number that we can kind of reconcile with. So the, the process for us was, and mainly, you know, for me, because I thought it was easier to do that way and to be able to reconcile it, that's kind of how we started. We started with, you know, this current year and said, what?
One oh nine, one oh nine, and as you go further down, it's a two eighteen, there's a two eighteen spread between what we anticipated in LOSIP and now what we're seeing out of the Appropriations Committee for LOSIP. So we've put that in the general fund and lowered the amount of LOSIP in the, in the road fund. We also received our KERMA Equity Distribution number, which is roughly forty thousand, six eighty-nine. You can see that over there. That's basically a dividend, for lack of a better word, from our insurance company that we get every year if we maintain membership. So that wasn't available. What are you doing to me?
I'm freezing paint so that people can see what you're talking about.
Okay, alright. Well, I can point to it. Okay, so, page over a little bit. Go down. There we go. Keep going, keep moving.
There it is.
There it is.
Right there.
Right here, forty, right there. We've added that in because that's a known revenue at this point. So those, those things are changes to the revenue stream. At the end of, this, the forty, the forty thousand dollar number actually increased the revenue and had the net effect of decreasing the mill levy because we're not needing to raise that amount by taxes to fund the town manager's proposed budget or the budget you all are going to adopt this evening. So those were the changes to the revenues. Do we have any questions at this point on revenue? Okay. So, Jeff did.
Will you just go back to the roads? So is, maybe you're going to get to this, but are you saying, is there, if we don't get the LOSIP money, we're putting it in off of, we're putting in more town funds so that we would still do the one point two million?
Right, right. We'll, we'll take the, the additional revenue we get from the state and transfer it to the road fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is that, and that's reflected in here?
Well, there's not a, a transfer reflected, but it's, there's no particular expenditure against those revenues. So we anticipate a movement to, to the road fund.
Okay, so it's not in, you haven't raised like the physical services budget or whatever to reflect that?
No.
The assumption is, we'll do it, but it's not in this.
No, because we're still showing an expenditure in the road fund of one point two million dollars.
Oh, okay.
So what we should show eventually in the municipal system is a transfer in of those dollars.
So, just a question, a clarification probably. From the Appropriations Committee at the state level, they've put, or they're looking to put back money into the, the Pequot and the pilot that had been removed.
Some of it, yes. Yes. We looked at what the latest version from the Appropriations Committee was and used a portion of those funds. We didn't take everything they were looking at, we just took enough to cover the offset in the LOSIP.
Okay. The important thing is, at the end of the day, we're still funding road paving like we had anticipated.
Yes, that was the number one goal of that exercise, was to make sure there was still one point two million dollars available for roads.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, okay. Any other questions on the revenue?
No.
Okay, we'll move over to expenditures. Okay, and we'll page over to the right. Freeze the pains. So we've had some changes, as we talked about in the Budget Finance Committee meeting. We've had some changes in the insurances over the past six weeks since we've published the town manager's budget. And we've made some tweaks in the overall spending plan recognizing those differences. Now, in terms of ads, we're proposing to add two thousand dollars to the town manager's budget for additional travel and training in the town manager's office. Notice that the total is still less than the current year, and we'll page down a little bit. We're adding, and again, these are dollars we're moving from the insurance line because we're taking those cuts. We're adding some money to the police department budget in anticipation of the school resource officer grant for the middle school. If that person is hired, we have some additional dollars to make sure we can bring them on and pay them in the, in the next year. So those dollars are moved to the police department line item. We're responsible for twenty-five percent of the total cost. We don't anticipate having a full year of a person, but that's enough to cover twenty-five percent of the cost for a partial year of that person. And understanding that in the following year, we would have to add more, in the following year, more than that, and at the end of the third year, we would be covering the entire cost. Okay, we'll page down a little bit. The library, Budget and Finance has recommended a deduct of five thousand dollars, some of it insurance, some of it from their line items. Let's go down. This is the net effect of the insurance changes with the Board of Ed. We share insurances. The Board of Ed's has sixty-nine percent of the insurance spend and we have thirty-one percent. And whatever changes are made, we proportionate that out accordingly. We'll go down a little bit. And there's the health insurance adjustment on the town side for a further deduct. And we'll go down a little bit. So net effect, total appropriation is, we'll page over. Eighty-nine million, one hundred ninety-two thousand, eight fifty-two.
What happened?
Well, it's with roads.
No, that is without roads.
Now, look at the bottom line. Total including road.
No, it's not in there.
Okay, so you're just going to move that over?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, this, this original road number was three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars to be raised by taxes. So we've increased that here to offset the, the reduction of LOSIP. You don't see LOSIP and TAR in this spreadsheet because it's off in the capital road fund. Okay? So in the road fund, we're anticipating one point two million, and up, and six hundred and seven of that now is anticipated to be raised by taxes, and the rest is a combination of TAR and LOSIP funds. For a total budget of eighty-nine, seven eight nine, two six four.
Six two four.
Six two four.
Seven eight nine.
Seven eight nine, eighty-nine, seven eight, seven nine eight, six two four. O U eight one two. Okay. So that's where we are. Discussion of further additions, changes. Now, let's go to the motion page. Now, for adoption and on the podium this evening, it's a series of motions, I think there's seven of them, that you'll have to make individually based upon these numbers on the left. Total spending, total C N F road budget, total library budget, total school budget, the tax levy, the mill levy, so forth and so on. And you'll adopt those individually, and you'll have a budget for next year. There's also a series of change motions on the podium this evening that the council has to adopt. Those are modifications to the town manager's budget. It's a process, Weathersfield follows.
So, how do we start? Oh, one thing, can you talk about the, we talked about in Budget and Finance, the reduction on the town side, but we've added it back in for improvements to Webb?
We're going to reduce to a hundred thousand.
Well, there was a undeclared, unidentified series of improvements in the capital budget of roughly two hundred thousand dollars. The Budget and Finance Committee had asked if there was enough available in that line item to pave a majority of the Webb school parking lot. And we ran those numbers, and there is enough to pave the very north end, and then what would we consider the west end or the area behind the school. So the two hundred thousand would be, would be enough to do that.
Right. And they weren't touching those tennis courts? That was?
No, we're doing the tennis courts.
Okay.
Yeah, tennis courts and the parking lot are proposed for the capital budget. So, okay.
Councilor Menusos, do you want to talk about the Budget and Finance process of reviewing?
During, during this process, we had, had met with Budget and Finance, we've met with the Board of Ed, and we've had some very good productive meetings. The communication, I think, has been very good, better and better, you know, every year. I think the budgets have been getting better. And we've gone, we went through a, a process like we did last year of trying to start from, trying to reconcile what the, the Board of Ed had presented to where we on Budget and Finance had thought the ads and deducts would come to a number that we can kind of reconcile with. So the, the process for us was, and mainly, you know, for me, because I thought it was easier to do that way and to be able to reconcile it, that's kind of how we started. We started with, you know, this current year and said, what, what kind of, what line items were going up, what line items were going down? And that would get us to a current services budget where we would be assured to maintain current services, programs, and staffing levels. And then we added in those initiatives that were discussed, and, you know, all the ones that were in front of us at the time, we had added in to make sure that, because we thought they were important enough. So we, we, at the end of the day, the last meeting we had was just prior to this meeting that we had some clarification and some good discussion about a few areas where we think there may have been some just philosophical differences in taking deductions or reducing the increase to, to the board. And we heard some, you know, we made some changes based on some of the answers that we had discussed with, with the board. So at the end of the day, the, the budget, we think the budget process worked well, and we're going to, we're going to come out with a, a good budget for the town that takes into account, you know, all residents in town and, and doesn't hurt the school system and doesn't hurt the taxpayer. So we think this is, this has been a good, good process. We did talk about some ways to make even better improvements, which we will work with the, the board on in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Just looking at the best way to proceed, I think we need to do the motions and the, the additions and the decreases that we just talked about related to the changes, and that we have those changes in, or motions in front of us, because that will reflect the number that you have on this spreadsheet. So if I look at, I don't think it matters, does it?
Start with number one.
Start, okay. It does matter. Motion number two oh one, three dash fourteen, one, is to increase the KERMA Equity Distribution revenue account by forty thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, or eighty-nine Do I have a motion to, to increase that revenue account?
Second.
Do we read it, or?
Yeah, we agree.
Yep.
Okay, and the number two of the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, motion number two zero one, three, three one four, one. Resolve that the budget as submitted by the town manager, April one, two thousand thirteen, be and hereby is amended as follows to increase the KERMA Equity Distribution Revenue Account by forty thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, account number four eight nine, two four.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Madam Town Clerk, do you want to do a roll call?
Sure. Councilor Drake?
Yes.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
Councilor Kotkin?
Yes.
Councilor Menusos?
Yes.
Councilor McAllister?
Yes.
Councilor Montanari?
Yes.
Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the motion number two, two oh one, three dash fourteen, or slash fourteen, number two, to increase the town manager's travel, training, and dues account by two thousand dollars?
Motion number two zero one, three, slash one four, underscore two. Resolve that the budget as submitted by the town manager, April one, two thousand thirteen, be and hereby is amended as follows to increase the town manager's travel, training, and dues account by two thousand dollars, account one one two, zero two, five two two, one two.
Second.
Any second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor, Madam Town Clerk, do you want to do a roll call?
Councilor Drake?
Yes.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
Councilor Kotkin?
Yes.
Councilor Menusos?
Yes.
Councilor McAllister?
Yes.
Councilor Montanari?
Yes.
Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next one is number three, two, two oh one, three dash, or slash fourteen, underscore three, to increase the police department payroll account by twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the grant match for a school resource officer.
Motion number two zero one, three, slash fourteen, underscore three. Resolve that the budget as submitted by the town manager, April one, two thousand thirteen, be and hereby is amended as follows to increase the police department payroll account by twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the grant match for a school resource officer, account number one four two, zero two, five zero 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 one.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Okay, Madam Town Clerk?
Councilor Drake?
Yes.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
Councilor Kotkin?
Yes.
Councilor Menusos?
Yes.
Councilor McAllister?
Yes.
Councilor Montanari?
Yes.
Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you.
And motion number four, to decrease the library health insurance account by five thousand dollars?
Motion number two zero one, three, one four, four. Resolve that the budget as submitted by the town manager, April one, two thousand thirteen, be and hereby is amended as follows to decrease the library health insurance account by five thousand dollars, accounts one seven zero zero one, one seven zero zero two, one seven zero zero three, one seven zero zero four, one seven zero zero five, and five one, one zero one.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? Madam Town Clerk?
Councilor Drake?
Here.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
You know you're here, Dave.
I know.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
Councilor Kotkin?
Yes.
Councilor Menusos?
Yes.
Councilor McAllister?
Yes.
Councilor Montanari?
Yes.
Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And motion number five, to decrease the education budget by thirty-three thousand, seventy-five dollars for additional insurance savings?
Motion number two zero one, three, one four, five. Resolve that the budget as submitted by the town manager, April one, two thousand thirteen, be and hereby is amended as follows to decrease the education budget by thirty-three thousand, seventy-five dollars for additional insurance savings, account number one nine nine, zero zero, five two two, two five.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? Madam Town Clerk?
Councilor Drake?
Yes.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
Councilor Kotkin?
Yes.
Councilor Menusos?
Yes.
Councilor McAllister?
Yes.
Councilor Montanari?
Yes.
Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you.
And motion number six, to decrease the retiree medical benefit account by thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion number two zero one, three, one four, six. Resolve that the budget as submitted by the town manager, April one, two thousand thirteen, be and hereby is amended as follows to decrease the retiree medical benefit account by thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, account one nine six zero zero, five eight two nine nine.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? Delores?
Okay. Councilor Drake?
Yes.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
Councilor Kotkin?
Yes.
Councilor Menusos?
Yes.
Councilor McAllister?
Yes.
Councilor Montanari?
Yes.
Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we have motion seven, to decrease the LOSIP revenue in the C N E F road fund by two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Motion number two oh one, three, one four, seven. Resolve that the budget as submitted by the town manager, April one, two thousand thirteen, be and hereby is amended as follows to decrease the LOSIP revenue in the C N E F road fund by two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, uh, two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Sorry.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Councilor Drake?
Yes.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
Councilor Kotkin?
Yes.
Councilor Menusos?
Yes.
Councilor McAllister?
Yes.
Councilor Montanari?
Yes.
Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you.
And number eight, to increase the Pequot revenue by a hundred and nine thousand dollars?
Motion number two oh one, three, one four, eight. Resolve that the budget as submitted by the town manager, April one, two thousand thirteen, be and hereby is amended as follows to increase the Pequot revenue by a hundred and nine thousand dollars, account number four two six, one zero.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions? Councilor Kotkin?
I just want to replay one thing, Jeff, that you said. I, I think you said, and this applies to this hundred and nine thousand, and I guess maybe the next hundred and nine thousand as well. You feel, obviously, there's no guarantees in life with the legislature still setting its budget, but your view is that, I want to say it's more, it's more likely that we would perhaps get more revenue than this, than less? That you've, this is a somewhat conservative number, perhaps? Is that true, or did I misinterpret what you said?
This number we're proposing is substantially less than the current year number, but the town manager's budget had no, didn't have anything for these two line items.
Okay.
So we've looked at what the Appropriations Committee has offered up in terms of modifications to the governor's budget, and took, and took from two larger municipal revenue sharing accounts, the money we do, we would need to offset the LOSIP. So there could be more, but we took enough just to offset the LOSIP.
Okay, so we feel comfortable, and again, no guarantee.
Oh, God, no.
Yeah.
We feel comfortable in anything.
But we feel that, that this is, yeah, this is a reasonable number. I mean, we're not, we're putting it in because we've, not because we just hope for it, but we actually think it's a reasonable number, given what's been going on in appropriations?
The number in the Appropriations Committee is larger than those.
Okay.
That we've seen.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, Delores?
Councilor Drake?
Yes.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
Councilor Kotkin?
Yes.
Councilor Menusos?
Yes.
Councilor McAllister?
Yes.
Councilor Montanari?
Yes.
Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number nine is to increase the pilot for state-owned property revenue by a hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Motion number two oh one, three, one four, nine. Resolve that the budget as submitted by the town manager, April one, two thousand thirteen, be and hereby is amended as follows to increase the pilot for state-owned property revenue by a hundred and nine thousand dollars, account number four two five zero one.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions about this one? Okay.
Councilor Drake?
Yes.
Councilor Hurley?
Yes.
Councilor Kotkin?
Yes.
Councilor Menusos?
Yes.
Councilor McAllister?
Yes.
Councilor Montanari?
Yes.
Councilor Roberts?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to the tally that's currently on the spreadsheet, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thirty, yeah.
Okay.
The top number, total spending.
Further modifications to any of the expenditure or revenue line items?
I, I have a question. On, I want to go back to the paving of the Webb parking lot and the, the tennis courts. I, I thought we were going to pave as much as we could of the Webb parking lot by eliminating the, doing the, the tennis courts. Is that not what we're, what you have in there?
No, the tennis courts are in there, and that was a recommendation of the High School Building Committee, since we're taking those tennis courts offline this year. They wanted to somehow add additional courts back into the system since we've taken the webs offline. So we put in, and that was a recommendation to the C I A C, that they fund the Webb, the Webb tennis courts. Then further budget discussions, we talked about, well, it'd be, you know, it'd be nice to do the Webb parking lot if we're going to do the Webb tennis courts, so we made the connection to do the parking lot. The two hundred thousand is enough to do north of the bus loop and the rear of the property, which is what we discussed at the last meeting.
So how much more would it cost? And I know that we had some disagreement on the Budget and Finance Committee. How much more would it cost, again, to do the entire north part of the Webb parking lot, including the, the, the bus drop-off between that median and the curb?
We didn't piece that out individually. I just was asked, engineering, to price whether we could do what we've asked to do for two hundred thousand dollars. The whole parking lot, but for the south side?
Right.
Was two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But each one had some mobilization in them, so once we just tracked it out, the mobilization, and looked at unit pricing, we realized we could, with leaving the bus loop alone, since people felt it was in okay shape for now, we could accomplish the rest of the paving for the two hundred thousand dollars.
So my only comment is that the, and I, and I've walked it, and the bus loop area between the, I guess, the east and west side of that concrete median, and if you drew kind of a perpendicular line to the sidewalk, that's really the only area that is good. And to me, it just doesn't seem to make sense that we just don't do that and do it right, because all it's going to do is, like you see now, you see a seam where the old pavement meets the new pavement, and it just heaves, and a plow hits it, and it just starts coming up. I, I'd rather not put the money towards those tennis courts and put it towards finishing I'd rather not put the money towards those tennis courts and put it towards finishing that lot up. You know, my thought on the tennis court is, you know, I've heard from some people, too, that maybe a better place to relocate those tennis courts would be over to the Silvestine Middle School, where it fits into the curriculum, and that may be better served. I don't know if the Board of Ed has talked about that or can offer something, but, so I offer that up to the rest of you here. Do I need?
Comments? Counselor Roberts?
I don't agree with that at all. I looked at that bus area, too, and to me, it looks fine, and the tennis courts are definitely needed. And I think we've had comments in the past that that section of town, there's no tennis courts over there. And having now tennis courts at the middle school, I don't think is the answer. And I would also, I actually have a little bit of a problem with the actual paving of the parking lot, although I'll go along with it. We have, a long time ago, set up the CIAC to come up with a process so that we don't nitpick, and we don't, you know, pick projects at will just because somebody likes them. And with this project, we're just sort of grabbing it out of thin air, because we have two hundred thousand dollars. I think if I was a member of the CIAC, I'd be very upset that, you know, they spend hours every year and months, and then at the last minute on adoption day, the council comes in and decides a few little projects that we should do. So I'll vote for the web project, but I won't vote to not fund the tennis court.
No, I understand, but I mean, I think with all due respect, they have considerable volunteer time into what they do, and so don't we. I mean, you know, I think it's foolish not to do the whole thing. The whole reason why that started was because we were talking about the tennis courts, and we realized, you know, why are we doing those tennis courts when you can't get to them? You know, you can lose a small kindergartner in those potholes over there. They're so big. So that's how that got started. But so I don't.
Maybe we should, you know, for the hell of it, throw in the windows at web, which is also a needy project. I mean, where does it end?
It doesn't. There's never enough money to fund all the projects we want to do. If there were more, maybe we'd do that. I mean, we're volunteers, too, with ultimate authority of where our money gets spent, where taxpayer money gets spent. And if we think there's a better project than what CIP has on their list, well, then so be it.
Any other comments? Counselor Cottin?
Sure. So I think currently, if I'm counting it up correctly, there are fourteen public courts in town. That obviously wouldn't include private courts, such as the ones down at Pine Acres. But there, so there's six at the high school. I think there are four at Mill Woods, two at Hanmer, and there's two at Webb, which have, which are, obviously, they got taken offline because they were so hazardous. So if we have, if we take six courts at the high school offline for three years during the renovation, then we're essentially taking close to half of all the public courts that we have in town offline. And we do have two courts, and we have two courts at Webb that have been courts for a while. You know, it's obviously one of the uglier public facilities in town, if you take a close look at what's over there. And, you know, they're obviously the only two courts that are over on that, on that west side of town. So I think we do need the courts. I mean, there are tennis players in town. The courts at Mill Woods are used quite often. I assume once the high school, for the three years at the high school, will not have high school courts available to them. I assume that the girls' and boys' tennis teams are gonna have to practice at other courts, including Mill Woods. These, I just, they're ugly. I mean, it's really, I can't believe we would not, we would want those courts to continue to look as they do currently. And they were used when they were real tennis courts. So I would, especially given that we're taking so many offline for so long, I would really object to taking those out of the capital improvements budget, which was reviewed at length by the committee.
Don.
Counselor Hurley?
I would actually agree with Stathi. I'd rather, I've been over in the parking lot. I'd rather do that whole parking lot and then put the tennis courts online next year. It just seems like the reasonable thing to do, get that whole parking lot done, and then fund the tennis courts next year.
I think that those, I mean, I walk over there most days. The area that we're talking about dinging up is fine. I mean, it's, it was done when the, when the, when Webb was redone, so the both that, that strip, as well as the south side of the school, are pretty much like new. They were done very well during the web renovation. So to say that we're gonna dig up a strip of property that really is fine, and we're gonna allow the tennis courts to languish when they are needed in town, because we're taking almost half of our courts offline, that just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I mean, I don't think, you know, pushing it off a year is gonna be that detrimental. And it'll give us more time to talk to the Board of Ed and see what maybe their plans are. They may, you may hear, I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate to have the chair speak to that of Board of Ed, but there may be some future plans where they'd rather see it at Silvestine Middle School. And I'd rather work in concert with what their plans are. So I don't think one year is gonna make or break it. I mean, when is, when are those tennis courts gonna actually be offline?
This summer. Again, this was a request from the building committee to the CIAC to get this done.
Yeah. Tennis courts?
Yeah. Well, this started last year, when everybody was going through the budget process and said, man, those web courts are ugly, we ought to rip them down. And we wanted money to rip them down, but then everybody said, no, we ought to put them back. So through a process of a year, we recognized, and then with the high school coming online, we needed ninety thousand dollars to put them back, because we're gonna need them anyway. So here we are.
So, I mean, do I need to make a motion? Can I make a motion?
Counselor Drake has come in.
Be honest with Stathi. For me, the CIAC guys put a fair amount of time for this. I just.
I know.
I know where you're coming from, but I think I just, for me, I'd like to stay the course. I know splitting the paving maybe seem like it's, like, maybe a little half-assed way to do it, but to tell you the truth, we do a lot of that in town like that. But it's a good way to do it, and just to pave something that's good when there's so many other things to pave. I don't think it's that big of a deal. So I kind of like to stay the course.
I just don't want to do it half-assed. I think we should just break old habits then, if that's.
No, I understand that, but that paving is pretty good. We could use it somewhere else, that's all. But, and again, CIAC guys spent a lot of time on this, so.
Can we bring up the Googler shot? I mean, we'll see this area we're talking about, it just.
We're not online with this.
Oh.
No, and I also support the building committee's recommendation and CIAC for really looking at that. I mean, six courts coming offline, that would leave six viable courts. So you're only having six when you have fourteen, and so bringing that additional two on will give some more flexibility.
And I still think there's alternatives with Pine Acres. I've talked to the president of Pine Acres, and they would be willing to work something out, I'm sure, to help with the deeds. So I think, again, one year, I don't think is gonna be, you know, too detrimental. So, I mean, I'll make the motion to eliminate the funding for redoing those tennis courts at Webb in place, and replace that with paving the remainder of the web parking lot. This year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, Dolores, do you want to call a roll?
Sure. Counselor Drake?
No.
Counselor Hurley?
Yes.
Counselor Cottin? Counselor Manusos?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
No.
Counselor Montanari?
No.
Counselor Roberts?
No.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
No.
Chairperson Hammond?
No.
Okay. Those have it.
The motion failed. Thank you. Back to our further discussion about the budget as it exists at eighty-nine million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. Are there any further?
I have a question. Does this include the cuts that we talked about at Budget and Finance an hour ago?
No.
No.
This is the current budget, right? Okay.
Correct.
So you need another motion?
Well, I think you need to, we can move over to the expenditure line, and you can, the numbers will move over if you move down to the Board of, wherever you want. Make changes. It'll transfer over to the motion.
Can I make one comment? This last sheet you showed, you talked about the road transfer. Maybe we want to explain that again, because I don't want people to think we have a four point six nine percent increase in the town side. You know, if someone just took a quick look on the, there's six hundred, I'm just saying, go back to that sheet. When you talked about that, it was on a sheet. If you look up real quick, I think you need to explain that, that's not where we're at.
And it's, and, right.
For one side, yeah. I'm just saying, you may want to take a quick minute, because if you look at that without really understanding, and you talked about it on these sheets, not on that sheet. I just maybe take a quick look.
You're gonna see a change in the total expenditure, because what you're, what you're seeing for total expenditure is the amount to be raised by taxes. Another separate fund where the LOCEP and the TAR show up. So we're spending the same amount of dollars.
I understand, but the sheet you had a minute ago, go back to that last sheet.
The motions, yeah.
I'm just saying that four point six seven percent, I just gotta be careful what people see on it, that's all.
Right, and that, that.
Because it isn't that.
It isn't that, because you gotta include.
That's what people are gonna see right now. They're gonna see that.
It's, yeah. It include, that does not include the roads, which brings down the total percentage. Because the road last year was nine hundred thousand.
I'm just, again, someone walked at home, walked on, turned on the TV right now and saw that, they go. So I just.
That's, where the cursor is right now, that's the number.
Yeah, but the point, as I say, the six oh seven there is taken off on the left side.
Right.
So make sure people understand.
So on the town side, once you factor in that road, it's down to what, it's really like one and a half percent?
When we had the roads in with the town, we were up, and I don't know, I don't remember the percentage off the top of my head, but we were up a total of like five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars from the current year. So it was, it was, it was one point eight nine or something. Then you throw everything together, we were at two point six nine percent. Where are we?
This is, this is everything with the change.
No, but you're missing the point. The thing I want to say is, we're not, like, giving the town side some big gift, and the school board is getting less or something like that. I just want to make sure we reflect.
The sheet that ran in.
It's a wash.
Well, right, and the town side is at a high one percent number, one point something. It's a, you know, we, it's not that four point. I just.
Dave, if you put that sheet you had up before, that would probably help.
It's fine.
Yeah.
Well, I get it, I just want to make sure everybody else gets it.
So what is the number on the town side, then, is two point oh three?
The general fund plus roads.
Is two point oh.
Total increase is two point nine percent.
Okay. So may I suggest, if I may, when you, you should, yeah. For the press, maybe you should give them those numbers split out, so when it's in the paper, the people know, like, what the road percentage is, what the town percentage.
When y'all finish, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, I understand. This way we'll.
But, yeah.
All right, so I guess I need to ask you, what is the number with all these adjustments?
Two point nine percent.
No, no, the total number that we need in the motion.
Well, you've got a series of motions now.
Right.
Okay. And they're not reflective of anything you talked about at the six o'clock.
Correct.
Okay. So you've got a motion for total spending, a motion for the road budget, a motion for the library budget, a motion for the total Board of Education budget, the total combined levy, and then setting the mill levy for the general fund and for the road improvement fund.
Jeff, does this reflect the motions we just passed?
Yes.
Okay, so those are in there?
Those are in there.
Thank you.
So any further changes, you would have to make a separate motion, other than if you're appropriating to the library, or changing the library's appropriation, or the school's appropriation, since they're separate funds, you just set their appropriation.
But, for example, the library board appropriation reflects that five thousand dollar healthcare savings.
Yes.
So we don't have to modify that motion if we are comfortable.
Right. Everything you've voted on is already reflective in these numbers that you're seeing this year.
So then, so what's the first motion? Are we at this, one at this page here?
No, this page.
Or now we're on this page?
Are there?
Unless there's further, this just left room for any further changes.
Oh, okay. Oh, that was the one that you guys just voted down?
Yep.
All right.
That would be it.
All right. So.
So we should start with that, too.
Oh, wait, hold on.
Well, no.
I think we just need to have some discussion. If we're ready to. Do a.
So two questions. The first, the first number that we're gonna put in, is that the overall town budget, or the part, or?
Yes.
It's the eighty-nine million?
That's the number.
Okay.
The grand appropriation.
Do we have to do it that way?
Yes.
Can we start with the town? All right, I think we're all a little confused with that number.
Because if you change that, it's gonna change one of the other numbers.
Well, if you change one of the other numbers, it changes that.
Right.
Right, so would you? Wouldn't you change the other numbers first, and then change, do that one last?
I would vote for one number and go home.
I like the way you think, Jeff. No, but you want to.
This multiple motion thing, I don't get.
But if you do all the motions to roll up to that number, that's.
You can, then, you know, if you.
Right. I think the point, if there's a possible change.
Well, I think what you really want to do.
It doesn't make sense to start with the big number that's gonna change.
Well, I think you want to, you want to focus on, are there any further changes? Rather than make motions, are you, are you good with the numbers?
Yeah, I think Donna's got it right. Let's have the discussion, so we can go to that. We're a little premature without the discussion. Right, you gotta roll up to it, thank you.
Right.
All right.
Jeff.
Yeah, just, Jeff, one question. This is not, not on the eighty-nine million dollars, actually on your budget.
Yes.
I was wondering if you could just quickly review, just so that I, we know what you've done in any sort of adjustments or changes in personnel, whether it's in the police department or anywhere else in town, in the coming budget versus the budget that we're operating under today.
Okay.
So if you could just go through, I don't think there are a lot, but I think it would be helpful just to say whatever changes you've made.
Right, and you heard this at the public hearing. We announced that there is, there will be a retirement in the social and youth services department, and there's now a vacancy, gonna be a vacancy, in the nature center budget. In order to, and we've combined the director of the nature center, along with the youth services coordinator, into what's called a youth program manager, which will, in addition to overseeing the programs at the nature center, will also handle some of the social and youth services things, the non-counseling functions of that position, and be more of a program manager than a direct service provider. And we've also backfilled, not in the town budget, but in the nature center's own revenue stream, a part-timer at the nature center to handle some of the more maintenance and exhibit support tasks, you know, feeding a snake at the nature center. That's a change. So those are the changes there. We've also restored a zoning enforcement officer in the building department, part-time.
All right.
We're netting a full-time position gone, though. Overall, the reduction in FTEs on the town side is down one.
Down a full, a full FTE? So when you say restored the zoning enforcement, that's?
It's when it gets to like twenty hours a week.
Oh, okay. So is it, so is it down one and up a half, or am I missing?
Yeah.
It's down one and up a half, okay.
But it's a part-time.
So today, the number of people we have in Public Works, number of people we have in the police department, you know, sort of, we're, we're a lot of that stuff.
Actually, we're actually, well, then if you look at the SRO, if we get the SRO, then we're up one, so.
Aside from that, it's, it's status quo.
Well, down a half.
Down a half. Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, but we're also adding a couple hours in the fire marshal's budget for anticipation of a grant to offset those grant costs. I mean, there's little tweaks all over to cover grants, but there's no new full-time positions. Actually, we're losing a full-time position, salaried union position in this budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other points of discussion?
About the budget process in general? Okay. I've been involved in town budgets since nineteen ninety-four, and both on the board's side and twice on the council's side. And this year has been a first, I'll leave it like that. The budget, from my point of view, has been entirely managed, run, orchestrated by the Budget and Finance Committee, which some of us are on and a lot of us are not on. And the numbers keep changing. This is the first time I can ever remember, and there are people in the audience that spoke the other night about this, that we have not had one meeting with one department head on the town side. I mean, department heads have contacted me, saying, when are we coming in? I said, don't ask me. The whole process has changed. It's gotten to be run by a smaller and smaller group of people. In terms of transparency and accountability, many of us have been in the dark. There was a meeting last week that I attended. I thought it was an open council meeting. I think it was actually a Budget and Finance Committee meeting. There was a spreadsheet that was presented. I asked for a copy of it. I was told I would get it. I've yet to see it. There was another spreadsheet tonight at the previous meeting. It's on a computer, as far as I know. I don't have it. I don't know if other members of Finance, the Finance and Budget Committee have it. The reason I asked for hard copies tonight of this is because I don't have anything with numbers in front of me that reflect where we are right now. And obviously, we don't have this page. So I'm concerned that there's less and less input from the town. I think there was, and town staff in particular. The Board of Ed came the other night and made an impassioned plea to keep the budget where it was. I think their budget has been well thought out, well researched, and their increase this year is way, way lower than what it's been in other years. I would grant that the, you know, there was an adjustment we could make because of healthcare. But just to hack away at numbers on the Board of Ed's side, because we feel like it, I think, is inappropriate and irresponsible. And, you know, there's a meeting at the end of the previous meeting tonight. The Assistant Superintendent said, you know, if you contact, if we have better communication, maybe next year, if we knew what the number was going in, we could aim for that number. And in past years, that has been the process, and leadership of the council has gotten together with leadership of the Board of Ed and said, you know, this is the number we're going with. The Board of Ed hasn't always agreed or listened to it, but there has been that dialogue. And the dialogue this year, I think, has been nonexistent, from my point of view. And it makes it extremely hard to vote and support the budget, based on the information I've had up until a few minutes ago.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just say that whatever Jerry said, I disagree with entirely. This has been probably the more, the most open and most communicative we've been with the board since I've been on council. It got better every year. And as for this being the smallest increase in the last few years, maybe you're just not coming to the meetings and paying attention, Jerry, because this has been the second highest increase in the last five years.
They've come in with six to nine percent in other years, Stathi. I'm talking historical perspective here.
Yeah.
And maybe you've had communications with the Board of Ed, again, in the Finance and Budget meeting, but not with the council as a whole, and we've had no discussion townwide at all with any department heads about the budget on the town side. And I'm talking about, you know, getting together as a council and having a meeting or a special meeting and saying, this is where we're headed, not running everything through finance, Budget and Finance. And I know you're gonna disagree with me, but that's my own opinion.
I know, but, I mean, just to refresh your memory, last year, we went through the exact same process. We had the exact same spreadsheet. We had Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
And I had the same issues. We got to budget time, and I was asking for a hard copy, because, you know, the numbers keep changing every time somebody hits enter on the spreadsheet.
As it should. This is an eighty-five million dollar budget. Don't you think it's gonna change from time to time?
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm disagreeing with the, I'm disagreeing with the process.
Budget and Finance Committee meetings we had last year, the same way. It's open to everybody if you chose not to come. I mean, is the only reason why you're gonna come, if it's mandatory, because it's a council meeting? No, you come if you're interested. Obviously, you weren't, because you didn't come.
Well, then, the entire Budget and Finance Committee process should be listed as special meetings for the entire council, because as you know, if you get more than a certain number of people there, there's a quorum. So, you know, you can't have it both ways.
Listen, we changed this process because in the past, it obviously wasn't working. Because if you remember, right, over the previous five years, the budget was up and taxes and spending were up like forty percent. So the process we did seemed to be pretty well-received by the public. So there was no reason to change something that wasn't broken.
I believe.
It was broken prior to. It was broken prior to.
I believe that the meetings were posted as special meetings of the budget and finance committee so that other counselors could attend. And last year, when we did all of the workshops, those were budget and finance meetings. And everybody could attend. So this year was no different. We just did not have department heads come to those meetings.
And I would assume if you had questions, I mean, you have a great representative on our committee, Jeff Cocken. So, I mean, this is the first I've heard of it. I don't remember it last year.
So just, just to add, Stath, I think that's fine what you're saying. I do wanna say, though, that I think if, the big change I saw, I saw this year is that we did have department head meetings, and we had several council-wide meetings separate from finance that allowed us to at least have some input and discussion.
In these years?
In, in the previous year, not this year. And, and if there's a shift in your mind, and I think what you're saying, and you can correct me if this is an incorrect perception, and I think Donna probably supports this, doing more of the legwork at the finance and level is more efficient, more time, more time efficient. And I don't disagree with that. I think, and in fact, I think I sent an email out a couple of months ago saying, I didn't know, based on what Jeff had presented to us, that I, I thought the town budget was pretty tight, and there wasn't a need to, to do the parading of all our department heads to endorse what looked to be pretty intelligent. I have no issue with that, frankly. But I, I do wanna say that I think, I felt as one counselor, that we did not ever know until the very end that we weren't gonna meet as a council on the budget after some of these processes were completed. So, and that's not a criticism of any specific person, but I think in retrospect, it would have been helpful to know that if, if finance was the, the primary way in which we were gonna get that information, I would have wanted to have known that. I would have attended all of them. I mean, I attended a few at the end, because it still looked like it was shaping up that way. So I realize that, you know, not all of us are gonna have input in the process. And, and, but I, I do wanna say that, you know, I am a little concerned about that. I am concerned that department heads were not aware that there were not gonna be those meetings. And it leaves me a little bit concerned that, at the end of the day, finance probably addressed all of the issues that we would have addressed as a total council, but we're coming to the table at appropriation and having discussions about line items that we really should have been hammering out some time ago. So, I mean, again, I'm not trying to drape a big criticism over. I understand the mentality. It's to be a little bit more efficient, perhaps fast-track the process and allow the, the hands-on work to be done in smaller groups where it's a little bit more effective. But we swung from, from quite a bit more hands-on as a total council to really no participation as a total council. And, you know, you can imagine, all of us feel this way. The appropriation process is the biggest thing we do. It's the most important thing we do as elected officials. And so making a decision to go for or against these budget appropriations tonight, it, it isn't just a casual vote. And so we're sitting here, and I'm sure we're going to have disagreement about the board budget, for example, but I don't think there's a single board member sitting here that would say that there was good communication and would say that this was a budget process that they're gonna support. Not a single one, either party. So we can't say communication was great when the board's sitting there saying it wasn't. Now, I'm looking to them for the lead, because I would assume those processes would be happening behind the scenes. And I've asked repeatedly, and I've heard that it's not been great. So I have to go based on that and the impassioned commentary on Monday night. So I think, having said that, after this is done, because this is done, we should go back and take a look at what happened and mend some fences, in my opinion, with the board, regardless of what we do with money. They'll go figure out the problems with money that we create, but the communication issue in my, my mind is very concerning to me. Because I know from experience and what Jerry is saying, she's been at it a lot longer than me, that was not an issue on the table even last year. So I think we should go back and look at it at some point. Not now, get this done, but I would raise some concerns.
Of course, I would disagree with all that.
I'm sure you would, which is part of the problem.
And there was, you know, an interesting comment, and I wasn't at the, the council meeting on Monday, but, you know, Gina D'Angelo came up and said, let's stop playing politics at the expense of students. That was basically the crux of it. So here we are, on the night we're gonna adopt the budget, and this is the first time I'm hearing those words uttered from your mouth, that, hey, we should have included the department heads.
Stath, you've never responded to my email. You've never responded to my email from three weeks ago, asking for this exact same information. You can't tell me you didn't know that.
The email's right here. The one that you said you wanted to decrease the board two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
No, that's not true. What I said was, the six hundred was too extreme. No, you can read it. You're welcome to read. I have no problem with my email. What I'm saying is, I was asking for some input and saying that I thought the six hundred, three, four weeks ago, was too extreme. We should get back together, perhaps a number could be crafted with the board that would be more appropriate, is what I said. And you never responded. You never responded to that. So I'm saying, as one counselor, I would expect if I sent an email saying, can we get together and talk about this, you would respond. Now, you're busy. I get it. You got your work and everything else. You said that tonight. That's fine.
Everybody, nobody else has a problem picking up the phone?
After I send an email, I have to call you and track you down? That's what you're saying? Okay, I'm cool with that.
All right.
Fine. Sell that to the public.
I think, Stath, if you wanna talk about what we did in the meeting prior to this, there was looking at all of the different perspective pieces through the board budget. You talked about the reconciliation of the, starting at the appropriation from the previous year and looking at initiatives going forward. I think that would be helpful for the public to understand that we did talk about that at the six PM meeting, which the Board of Education Finance Committee and board members and administration were invited to attend and did discuss different pieces of the budget. And there were, and had been done at a previous budget and finance meeting where clarifications had been made and adjustments in, in looking at, going through all of the numbers were made to be reflective of those changes.
So, would you like what, bring it up or just talk about?
Whatever you think would be easy, as if it's to. Talk about the process, go through.
So basically, the process was, we started with this year's budget, which was fifty-one million, six-hundred-and-fourteen thousand and change. And we worked through what the increases were off of that, off of that as a base that we would have seen. And that came from communication, believe it or not, from the board and, and the, and the town manager and budget and finance and those counselor members that were interested in participating. And those increases were a little over two million dollars, which included things like contractual increases from, from union contract negotiations, special ed and magnet tuition, which was up very much, transportation increases, the OPEB contribution for post-employment benefits, supplies, replacement equipment, instructional and non-instructional, professional services, other maintenance and property services that were in the superintendent's budget from our second-to-last meeting at the library, some building improvements. And we also included an inflationary adjustment on some of these items that weren't covered under there. And then we, we worked methodically on decreases, what was gonna be different from this current year. We knew health was gonna be down substantially in a couple of different areas. Heat energy, electricity, and, and there were adjustments made. New instructional equipment, non-instructional, and we talked about those items that we had trouble reconciling, which was in part due to startup costs for all-day kindergarten and some savings on reducing personal days from twelve to five. There were some unanticipated retirement savings that we took, but which we later just zeroed out, because through discussions tonight, we had understood that those were already incorporated into the numbers. And that got us to a current services budget. And then we added in, you know, all the initiatives that were brought up at the, at the council meeting where the Board of Ed presented. And that included banned uniforms, some seed money, security director position, the SRBI tutor, the K-12 math supervisor, you know, benefits on those positions above, some additional insurance for the math supervisor, and some new equipment and technology improvements, which were a hundred iPads, a hundred-and-twenty-five laptops, and some new classroom furniture for two classrooms, which was something that the Board of Ed does every year. So at the end of the day, that kinda drove the number in a methodical way. And, and, you know, we, we got to a number that we thought was reasonable, which we will, you know, make a motion on.
Stath, you don't wanna go through, put that sheet over, if you think that's.
If, if you think it'll be helpful for.
Truth, I, I think you put a lot of effort in, but I think it's worth putting up so people see that we're putting the initiatives that is, that the Board of Education performed, how we got the number.
Sure.
Too bad more people weren't here tonight. I assume people watching TV.
Yeah, I do. And I guess why that's happening, if I may. Not everybody agreed with the number that Stath is about to present.
Yeah, just take the cable. Somebody on here, or do I want me to bring mine over? We can try to cable it over here.
Oh, I could, I should leave it in then.
There's a, I don't think it reached. Actually, I got a long report.
It's okay.
Yeah, just take the flash drive in.
So should I load it back up? Yeah.
Do you have the right end, Stath?
Stath, you have the wrong end.
No. Oh, I have it up right now.
It's not, is that my fault?
Yeah, okay.
So, what do you want me to start from the town?
Just go through it. I think people need to see what you, the time you put into it. That way, we, we tried not to cut anything.
So we look for a methodical process to coming up with a budget appropriation. And for us, this, this worked, for me anyways. Not Jerry, I guess. So we started this year at fifty-one, six-hundred-and-four, three-hundred-and-fifty-four. That was the bud, the current budget for the Board of Ed, fifty-one point six million. And then we had the conversation, what, what is gonna be going up this year? And we knew there were contractual increases, and we accounted for all that. We knew there was gonna be special ed magnet tuition increases. We knew there was gonna be transportation increases. We knew the OPEB contribution was gonna be increased. Supplies, instructional equipment, non-instructional equipment, and that inflationary adjustment we talked about, because we thought it was appropriate to increase the budget for those other line items that we weren't talking about here that may have had a normal cost of, or inflationary increase. Professional services, below these lines, these three other maintenance and property and building improvements, we added in, because that came from the, from Tim House in the last meeting that we had at the, at the town, at the library. And the idea was, that information that we met with, with the Board of Ed on, at that point, we were gonna reconcile with this, which we did, except for these few line items that we're gonna have, you know, discussion about probably again. So the increases were a little over two million, almost two-point-one. And then we said, okay, well, what's gonna be, what's gonna be decreased this year? We knew health insurance was going down significantly. The, there was two line items, or two health-related items that were going down. There were some heat energy savings, electricity savings. So these two line items, we had, these were the budgets for last year. So in our process, we said, okay, these were one-time expenses for that particular year, so let's zero them out and then add in all the initiatives, or whatever appropriate initiatives, that we thought should be funded, even though the board would decide ultimately what to do with the money. And then, then we had all-day kindergarten startup money, which was a topic of, of discussion. There was a, there was a startup cost for that last year, which in, in our analysis, in this process, you would have to back out, because that was a one-time fee. So those supply costs were backfilled with some other items. And that is, you know, one of the topics where, where there may be differences of opinion on as to, is that appropriate, you know, to, to increase or to, to decrease entirely or not. The same with substitutes. We, we know there were some savings from the personal days being reduced from twelve to five. And the, you know, the minimum savings would have been zero, and the maximum would have been about two-hundred thousand. So we thought it was reasonable to adjust it a hundred thousand. And then there were some unanticipated retirements that we thought would have been appropriate. But the, in the meeting we had prior to this meeting, the, we were comfortable enough that there wouldn't be any other retirements that weren't anticipated, so we zeroed that out. And again, these particular line items are, are ones that maybe not everybody agreed on, but this was, you know, the process. And then that got us to a current services budget, which would basically mean, okay, this is what we need at a minimum to maintain current services, programs, and staffing levels. And then we started talking about, you know, the initiatives. And the initiatives that we factored in from the beginning were the banned uniforms. And all these came from, you know, the Board of Ed. Seed money for that new evaluation process for teachers, the security director position, the SRBI tutor, the math supervisor, benefits on the security director, the tutor, and the math supervisor. An additional insurance cost for the math supervisor. And the, you know, major initiatives that we, that we were told were important to the board and to us as well were the iPads and the laptops that were requested. And then there were two rooms that, that the board referred, two classrooms that the board refurbishes every year as part of a rolling maintenance or upgrade plan to every room. So it was budgeted at forty-six thousand for each room, so we thought it was appropriate to, to put that in there. And this is just a, an adjustment number to get to where we're gonna make, end up making a, a reduction to make it an even number. And at the end of the day, that basically drove, that drove the process. We thought it was a reasonable one. That rep, this, you know, what we're gonna be proposing is an increase of one-point-five million. One-five-four-one-seven, or actually, it's, that's not exactly what it is, because of these other numbers that Jeff had. But basically, it'll be three hundred off of the request. And that basically amounts to a little over a half of a percent of the budget. So we don't think that is burdensome to, to have to recover somewhere in a, in a fifty-three million dollar budget. So that was basically, basically it. Any questions?
Just wanna make two observations, if you can go back up to the two cut-line items.
Yeah.
For the benefit of.
The highlighted ones?
Yes, thanks. Well, also, I just wanna make one preface point, Stath, that you made a comment that those of the council that would be, were interested could have attended. I, I think it's a little bit inflammatory to use that term, because if it was known to me at the beginning of the process, that would have been our sole input. I certainly would have adjusted my calendar. But, so to suggest that we're not interested, because we didn't attend, I think is a little bit misrepresenting, you know. Certainly, my, I'm pretty passionate about the budget, so I would have attended. I thought that was my only input. But with respect to those two line items, the all-day startup and the substitute certified, which is a reduction that is a conjecture on the part of finance with respect to those cuts, I wanna say, for the benefit of the public, not a single board member or administrator would agree that that premise is accurate. Not one. And I will tell you that as a counselor, I'm going to look to our elected officials on the board's side, who do all the legwork to provide for me accurate response to those two metrics. And if they say to me, they're completely inaccurate and not valid, I'm gonna put more. I'm going to put more stock into it. So, I want to make that point clear on those two things. Because, and the other thing I want to say about hard work, David, you said a couple of times, I think you said to me, you know, a lot of hard work went into it. There's no question, a lot of hard work went into it. I think the approach by finance in terms of zero base was a terrific intent. But I'll make an analogy. I've got three technicians that rebuild freezers all the time. A couple of years ago, two of them spent three days trying to build a freezer over to come up dry and couldn't figure out what was wrong. And it's because their basic premise was wrong. And they didn't include the right people to get the information to do it correctly. They could have saved a lot of time and gotten to a bottom line quicker. And I think that's what's wrong with this process.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Counsel Hurley.
I did a little bit different than what Stathi did.
Uh-huh.
Because the Board did come and say the other night that we shouldn't be doing a line item budget. So, I took a little bit of a different approach because they said that they would be the ones that should cut the budget.
Mm-hmm.
So, I looked at the line items, like we did with one of the line items in there that went up substantially over the last four or five years, and I came up with 400,000 or 500,000 dollar decrease.
Well, again, that approach might be helpful if the Board agreed with you and could come up with consensus.
I don't think they'd ever agree with us because they want more.
Well, of course, the Board always operates from the position of funding our schools to the best A-level they can. That's their job. But I would tell you that when we historically have hammered at initial proposed increases and gotten to lowered increase, which happens every year, the best result is when the Board sits together with the council and says, okay, we agree with these cuts, or we'll lop up some numbers that make some sense. And I've been asking for that for several weeks, and it hasn't happened. And it's no disrespect to the fact that you're trying to get there with your own approach, or your own method, or your own formulas. But again, I'm going to say it again publicly, not a single member of the Board sitting here tonight or administrator would say that those formulas are accurate. And so, you know, we're doing board work without the information. And so, I would tell you at the end of the day, I think the Board could come up with cuts. And I said in the emails, you said, Stathi, that it might be a number out there as high as 200 or 250. But it should come from the Board steering, where can those cuts come from? If they turn around as a result of this cut tonight and say, those two things, we can't possibly cut and be exposed. Because as I said in the six o'clock meeting, for example, the 100,000 dollars for personnel days, if that doesn't materialize, that isn't, we didn't go spend for computers. That's like, we got to find that because you guys cut it out of us, and that expense is there. So, they got to find that somewhere. That's the problem I have with that line item.
Listen, we're not telling them which line items to cut. I think Chairman Casio made it perfectly clear when he came up here Monday. I saw the tape that, hey, they're the ones that dictate where the money goes. All this process does is say, what's a logical way to get to an appropriation? These may be, may not be the right numbers. I mean, look, we had even, you know, health insurance, which from our insurance agent is saying should have been closer to 600. But we left it at 537 because that's what the Board had.
You're leaving some wiggles, Stathi.
There's a lot of items, I am sure, a lot of line items that probably have some conservative numbers in it, just like any budgeting process. So, are you saying that, I mean, so I guess I'm a little confused. Do you support the Board's budget as it was presented? Or do you support 250,000 for no reason because other than you think it's there somewhere?
No, first of all, neither one of those things I said. So, don't mischaracterize what I said. What I said in my email to you was, I think the Board, if pressed and sat with us, might be able to find some numbers they could present to us that reflect their knowledge of the line items and the 600 pages of documentation they worked on. I'd rather hear from them. An example might be that I've heard from the several Board members that if this cut goes through, it's not going to be startup costs and reduction in pay, it's going to be that security position.
So...
If that security position disappears because they know they can't do what you've wanted, and we haven't participated in that discussion, we've done a disservice to our community. Because we didn't decide as a group, that makes sense. Let's cut the security position out. That's what you're saying, let them do their own thing. And I'm saying, if their own thing is not something we like and we haven't discussed it, don't blame them a week from now when that cut happens. Because we didn't do it right, in my opinion.
So, your email to me was April 25th, right?
Right, before, when you first said 600,000.
Let me just read it because this totally is contrary to what you just said. You said, "On the board's side, we believe there's some additional room to trim."
Yes.
"We noted that Stathi used a 600,000 dollar cut number for demonstration on the Excel sheet. We would say that that is too aggressive. We have looked at new initiatives and believe there's between 230 to 250 in potential adjustments." So, have you been involved in the process or not? I mean, you said you looked at it, so what is it that you look at?
No, what I was suggesting to you is, there's my guidance to you to go back and find out from the Board where we might...
That's not what it says. It says, "We have looked." So, who's "we"? Is that you, Jerry?
Well, the three of us, three of us discussed it.
So, the three of you have looked at it.
Of course we have.
So, this isn't the first time, like we're hearing tonight, that this is the first time we're hearing of these answers and this process was flawed because we didn't know anything about it? You've obviously, according to this, back in April 26...
Stathi, you know what I'm going to say? I think you're being a little defensive because you've led this thing. And all I'm saying...
I'm very defensive because, I mean, I know this is an election year, and I know what you're trying to do.
It's got nothing to do with elections, Stathi. It's got nothing to do with elections.
This is a very logical process. Even Elaine Paradise came up to me before this meeting and said, hey, that was great in there, I understand it. So, I mean, I think it's contrary to what you said, that every board member thinks that...
Do you think Elaine would get up and say, "I agree with the cut"?
Of course not. If I were in that position, I'd be fighting for every dollar too. That doesn't mean it's the right number.
She might come up and be nice to you, but the substance is, does she agree with you?
So, she did it because that's just the way she is, her personality is just...
No, she's a nice person, and she doesn't like to have disagreements.
She's patronizing me, is that it?
No.
Let's keep the discussion about the budget.
I think what she's saying is, the substance of Elaine's position as a board member would be, does she agree with the cut?
This is ridiculous.
I was ready to put the spreadsheet down.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
So, words have meanings, and you said it, so I mean...
Good.
Not necessary.
So, go ahead, make a motion on the whole number?
No, we'll start from the bottom up.
We're going to start with number...
Four.
Five.
Number five?
No, wait a minute.
No, we can't start with that one?
No, we've got to start with number four.
Okay.
Either start with number two or start with number four. Start with number two, go forward, or start with number four and go backwards.
Okay, we can start at number, I don't know how...
Two, three, and four.
Start at number two, okay.
Go two, three, and four.
All right, I don't even know what that, that number is, what's the capital?
We need that sheet again.
We need that.
Just...
Be that other sheet you had, that's it.
Now, this is unmodified.
Right.
As of today.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I'll start. Make a motion.
Three. What number are we on? So, this is for number two?
Number two.
The total appropriations for the capital and non-recurring fund, road fund, be set at...
What's the number?
607-772.
607...
No, appropriations 1.2 million.
No.
That's just for capital and non-recurring road?
This is the general fund appropriation.
This is the general fund appropriation, got it.
Okay.
That's right, 607-772.
So, so the motion is that the total appropriations for the capital and non-recurring road fund be set at 607,772 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question?
Counsel Packen?
So, thank you, Mayor. Quick question. So, I should assume from this that the amount that we would be getting from the state is the difference between 1.2 million and 607,722, correct? Whatever that is.
It's right here.
So, you see, Town Road or TAR, which they haven't disturbed since the government budget.
Okay.
And then, Lo ship is now the 188, and then the amount to be raised by tax is 607.
Okay.
The difference from last year, we had a, you can see that...
The 900 was the tax levy last year. We've seen an increase in TAR, so the levy's down. To make up the 1.2 million.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that, thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor. Delores, can you call the roll?
Sure. Counsel Drake?
Yes.
Counsel Hurley?
Yes.
Counsel Kotkin?
Yes.
Counsel Manusos?
Yes.
Counsel McAllister?
Yes.
Counsel Montanari?
Yes.
Counsel Roberts?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hemmon?
Yes.
Thank you. All nine, ayes.
Okay, the next is number three, that the total appropriations for the library purposes be set at...
What's that number? A motion that the total appropriations for the library purposes to be set at 1,802,975 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Packen?
Just to confirm also, that that reflects the 500, $5,000 reduction that we took earlier. So, it was 1,807 or whatever before then. Okay, thank you.
Could you give me that total again, please?
1,802,975.
Counsel Drake?
Yes.
Counsel Hurley?
Yes.
Counsel Kotkin?
Yes.
Counsel Manusos?
Yes.
Counsel McAllister?
Yes.
Counsel Montanari?
Yes.
Counsel Roberts?
Yes.
Counsel, Deputy Mayor Consul?
Yes.
And Chairperson Hemmon?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine ayes.
And number four, that the total appropriation for the school purposes be set at...
Look, so, total appropriation for the, well, let me ask you something, Jeff. What, if...
Where are we?
School appropriation.
Okay.
So, this number, 53,123,059, what's, okay, that's it, yeah.
That says 53,429.
Right, that's before any adjustments.
Other than the 30-something thousand for the insurance.
Other than the 30 that we already...
Correct.
Right.
So, can we go to the expenditure page, please?
So, the motion would be for the total appropriation for the school purposes be set at 53,123,059.
Second.
Is that right?
Right, is that right?
No. Should be 123.
Yeah, I said one.
You said 123.
Yeah, he said 123.
Yeah.
That has been changed.
Do you want three plus what's there now, or three total?
It was three plus what's there now, so we just reduced that number.
By an additional 300,000, so it would be 53,123...
123,059.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
If I may, so, just to, again, so we, the original, because I think the original budget that we got, if I could just go backwards, was...
Go back to the...
Was, and this is before we did, did any changes today.
Right there, 54, 456, 134.
Okay, and then, we took out, so that's correct. Right, okay, all right. I just want, because we got, when we got the Board documents, there was a couple, there were a couple of different... In the Board budget, there was a late change that the Board had made, and it was reflected in one place but not another. So, I just want to make sure that's what we were looking at. So, we've already taken, earlier, we took, we took out the 33,000, and that's just pass-through, you know, the Board's not going to be charged it, they don't need a budget for it. So, now, on top of that, we're taking out another 300,000. I think that's the motion that's on the floor. I personally oppose that motion. I think the Board did a very good job explaining to us what was driving their budget higher. Yeah, I've probably made as many, if not more, motions over the years as anybody to reduce the Board budget. And usually, there's been something to back it up. I think the Board did a very good job, especially on discussing maintenance and improvements to the facilities that they have deferred for a while, including additional, whether it's additional furniture, additional electrical work, or additional maintenance work. Yeah, we did luck out, no question, this year, that the healthcare costs are going down significantly. That's wonderful. And I think it gives us an opportunity to continue, actually, to initiate some new pro, some new efforts to upgrade both the technology and the facilities that our kids go to school. And obviously, I'm not referencing the high school, which has the renovation underway. So, to me, the 300,000 additional dollar cut is excessive, and I can't support it.
Any other comments?
No, I'll just reiterate that this represents like a half a percent of the budget. And the difference between 300 and 250 you supposedly supported before is only 50,000, so I don't know how that's going to be so detrimental. I said it in the meeting before, I've got kids in the system, Counsel McAllister does, Counsel Hurley does. We wouldn't do anything that we thought would harm our own kids' education. So, that's why I completely support this. I think we had a very methodical process. It makes sense, and it keeps current services, it keeps the technology in there, that's important. All the ones that, that we talked about already.
Counsel Drake?
Yeah, my only comment, comment is, if it wasn't for the health insurance savings, this budget would be 4.7, 4.8 percent increase, which nowadays, I think is a pretty hefty increase. So, I don't, and based on Stathi's analysis, the numbers, 95 percent of the numbers came from the Board's budget. This 5 percent, you could argue over, which we added a 2 percent increase to. I think we were, I think the numbers are pretty good, a 4.6 percent increase, and that's what it is, is a pretty good increase. So, I, you know, I don't think we're cheating anything on anybody. So, I think we gave and put in everything that they asked for. So, I think it's a good budget right now.
Any other comments? Counsel McAllister?
Yeah, I think the process that was followed was pretty transparent in understanding what assumptions we made, whether we agree with those assumptions or not. I might not necessarily agree with all of myself. And it's probably a little bit more than I would want to cut. But I look at this number as not undoable from a Board side in terms of a half of a percent of their total budget. That's not something that you can't overcome. And the other thing, too, is I would support this one because I just think it's going to get worse from here if we don't.
Any other comments? Okay, Delores?
Counsel Drake?
No.
You don't support it?
I don't support it, no.
Counsel Hurley?
No.
Counsel Kotkin?
No.
Counsel Manusos?
Yes.
Counsel McAllister?
Yes.
Counsel Montanari?
No.
Counsel Roberts?
No.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
No.
And Chairperson Hemmon?
Yes.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five, six. It fails. We have six no's, three yes.
Yeah, I'd like to amend that, that the...
He's making a whole new motion because it failed.
Yeah, I'll make a new motion, that the appropriation for school purposes be set at 53,023,059 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013.
I'll second it.
What's that amount again?
Instead of 300, it's 400.
53,023,059. And I have a, do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Okay, this is Counsel Drake?
Yes.
Counsel Hurley?
Yes.
Counsel Kotkin? Counsel Manusos?
No.
No.
Counsel McAllister?
Yes.
Counsel Montanari?
No.
Counsel Roberts?
No.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
No.
And Chairperson Hemmon?
No.
So, this fails.
What was the...
It's 6, 3.
Did that fail?
3, 6, if you've got to put it in the... Three ayes, six no's.
Is there another motion?
Yeah, I'll make another motion.
Make another one?
Well, considering that failed, we got to, kind of get away where we need to go, so, I'll, I'll make a motion that the Board of Education budget be at fifty-three million, one twenty-three, oh fifty-nine.
That was already done. It already failed.
Well, we can do it again, right, can't we, based on?
One twenty, the same one, yeah, all right.
Make it eight, then.
Fifty-three, one twenty-three, oh fifty-nine?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Wait a minute, we already voted, so you either need to move to reconsider or change the number.
Yeah, make it oh five eight.
Still taking a dollar.
Take a dollar off, oh five eight.
Sir, second?
Second.
Second, Stathie?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel Drake?
Yes.
Counsel Hurley?
No.
Counsel Cottkin? Counsel Manusos?
Yes.
Counsel McAllister?
Yes.
Counsel Montanari?
No.
Counsel Roberts?
No.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
No.
Chairperson Hemmam?
Yes.
Okay, so I have one, two, three, four, five no's and three yes.
Four.
I'm sorry? Five and four?
Right, three. Four, yeses.
One, two, three, four, yes. So that failed.
I'll make a motion for fifty-three million, zero, seven, three, oh five eight.
Can you withdraw that, so we can motion maybe to recess?
Why don't we vote one more time?
All right.
All right, so what is? So Mike, what is the new number?
Fifty-three, oh seven, three, oh five eight.
Fifty-three, oh seven, three, oh five eight?
Yep.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Counsel Drake?
Yes, yes.
Counsel Hurley?
Yes.
Counsel Cottkin? Counsel Manusos?
No.
Counsel McAllister?
Yes.
Counsel Montanari?
No.
Counsel Roberts?
No.
Deputy Ma, Mayor Consul?
No.
Chairperson Hemmam?
Yes.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four yes, one, two, three, four, five no.
I like the motion for a, a ten-minute recess.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, we'll be recessing for ten minutes.
How many yeses was that passing?
Oh, it was five yeses.
Uh, four.
No, Stathie said no.
I said no. We're in recess, Mayor.
Fifty-three, oh seventy-three.
Mayor, we're in recess.
Yes.
Could you turn the lights on?
Yeah, I will.